Public hearings. And the first one is the Market Place Redevelopment Project, the theater site, parcel D. Can we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Moss, members of the Commission. This is the second FDP from the Market Place Redevelopment Project that is coming in front of you for consideration for approval. I'll start with a little bit of a background, then go into the details of the project. There will be a section on design analysis. I'll show you some photo simulations, talk a little bit about the traffic assessment report that was done for this project, and then walk you through how the project conforms with the general plan and how it is consistent with the PUD, as well as its compliance with CEQA, and finally, the recommendation. This should be very familiar to you. This is a proposed build-out. Last April, the Commission approved parcel C, which was a grocery store with 66 units. And today, we have what is called the theater site or parcel D. And this is a residential building for which you have done or seen study sessions three in the past eight, nine months. And today, it is for consideration for your approval. Just in terms of the next steps regarding the Market Place project, we are -- the approval hearing for parcel A is scheduled tentatively for next month. And for the tentative map, which kind of defines all the parcels, as well as the streets, that is scheduled tentatively at this point in -- at your August Planning Commission hearing. So, the proposal is for 223 units, which will have about a little under 300 vehicular parking spaces to accommodate the parking needs of the units. There are 223 bike spaces as well. The Commission has been keen to know what the breakdown of the residential units is, so that is in front of you. As you can see, a little over 50 percent of the units are two bedrooms and three bedrooms. To note, there are 12 townhouse units, and all 12 are either two-bedroom or three-bedroom So, this is the rendering. You've been seeing this for the last, at least, couple of, three sessions. There have not been substantial changes to the basic design. Certain refinements have been made. Other than that, the main changes from the last study session has been our consultant, the city architect consultant Arnold has been working with the applicant on the unit design to try and get them as family-friendly as possible. And Arnold will be here and here to talk about that in a little bit. So, this is a podium building, two levels of garage with five levels of residential units. It reaches a height of 80 feet. As you can see, it does go a little bit, eight to seven feet underground. This is to accommodate the puzzle lift systems that they have for portion of their parking needs. The site and circulation plan, not too much has changed. Actually, not -- nothing has changed since the last time you saw this. So, Shellmount Street is on the top, 63rd Street on your right, 64th on your left. The main lobby of the building occurs at the corner of Shellmount and 63rd Street. So, you have a lobby and an office along Shellmount. They have located their fitness center. There's also a bike shop. And at this corner, it's mainly trash and mechanical systems out here. 63rd Street and the Market Drive, this is where the townhouse -- townhomes are located. The vehicular entry occurs on 64th Street. What you see in red is the entrance for the vehicular systems. And it goes up the ramp on the second level of the garage. Loading and trash, as I indicated, occurs at this corner. Going up one level -- oh, sorry. You have bike parking at the top, which is located next to the elevators, which takes the bicycles out to either Shellmount Street or 64th Street. In terms of building amenities, as I'd indicated, on the first floor, they have proposed a fitness room, as well as a bike shop. On the second floor, they have a play area zone. They've got a climbing structure. There's a community chalkboard. There's a clubhouse, which is about 1,300 square feet with -- which has a high ceiling. It's almost a two-story ceiling. In addition to that, you have the pool and the picnic and the eating areas. So, with this, I'm going to hand the baton to Arnold, who will talk to you about the design of the project. And I'll come back and finish the presentation.
Just forward.
Yeah. Just down.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Good evening. We just want to go over a few things that have happened since the last time that you saw the project. Most of them is covered in the staff report. And just want to acknowledge the architectural team and just say that we've been working with the architectural team, the staff has, and I've done a lot of these over the years with different cities and different teams. And they've been good to work with, and we've made a lot of progress. A lot of it's come from your input and from the work of the team along with staff. So, the -- starting with this slide real quickly, the architecture team might want to talk more about this, but just to show that the basic concept tried to sort of break up the larger volume of the building by having three zones that provided a little bit of a different architectural treatment. And also, this one shows the opening on the -- more the south side to let light into the courtyard. Maru's gone over some of these, but just really quickly, things that I thought were worth mentioning is how this project has active zone on -- free out of the four sides of the project, with two sides being housing and one side being community and entry uses. Oops. Hold on a second. Wanted to talk a little bit about the courtyard. Some of the Commissioners had mentioned that in the past about solar access and things like that. So, this is the courtyard plan. You notice there's three entrances to the courtyard. That was also an earlier issue. One near the break in the building on the south side along 63rd Street. And then, two other ones, one around the northeast corner, and then one down by the community room that's in that light green color. So, there's three points where they get access from the building to the courtyard. There's also individual units have terraces that look out to the courtyard. The courtyard has a pool area, and it has a children's play area that's just above the pool area. And -- oops. What the heck is going on here? Sorry. So, these new drawings that they provided kind of show visually what those look like. And they've been working on the elevations to update them and make them look similar to the outside of the building. But what I wanted to show was the shadow studies and really focus on the middle band. The column in the middle was just September. And there, you're going to see that the upper one, which is nine in the morning, you're going to see the pool area is in light, and the other ones are in shadow. But by noon, the whole courtyard is pretty much in light, including the children's play area and the pool area and the sunning deck. And then, in afternoon, the children's play area is still in sunlight. So, from that perspective, the gap in the building and the overall orientation of the different activity zones has worked out fairly well overall for a building with this tall of a perimeter. So, I don't see any need to make any changes there for that. As far as the exterior design materials and detailing, the materials board, which is here, which you will be looking at, they've managed to develop a materials board with a lot of fairly premium materials and finishes. The facades have a lot of non-stucco area on them. This is the corner in the rendering that we're all familiar with. And I want to go to the corner decks in a minute, but this shows the materials and how -- you see a lot of non-stucco materials, which is a nice change from a lot of buildings. These are elevations. I'm bringing these up because I want to go to the enlarged areas on the elevations. And just go through that. So, at the corners of the building, almost all the corners have units with decks at the corners now. There was one unit that changed at the northeast corner of the building. We'll get to that in a little bit. And you notice that the decks have very clean lines with the glass sort of railing over kind of a clean fascia. And this is one of the areas that we will want to make sure the detailing works often in these type of projects. This is an area where the images look better on the renderings, and then you get to the detailing, and there's a little bit of a problem. So, we're asking that those details be looked at and approved so that we keep the same visual effect with the clean lines without a lot of structural and attachments and things of that nature that diminishes the corners of those buildings. Also, on the detailing here, they've introduced some nice features, like these perimeters around these openings on the windows on the Shellmount side, which kind of stick out from the building and kind of group a bunch of windows together. So, they've added a lot of interesting kind of architectural features that you don't often see. The side that faces the rest of the public market project is -- has some stucco, but one of the things that we've asked for and they've done is the most outer face of the wall, which is, you see, the white stucco. That's been changed from sand finish to smooth finish. Okay? And that occurs also on that Market Drive connector. So, if you look at the enlargement, you'll see that the white zones have the smooth finish now, which will kind of hold that area that is forward of the other areas and make it look a little bit cleaner. And so, that's been a good change to get that. The darker colored stucco up on top is sand finish, but it's further away. It's set back a little. It's a darker color, and I think that's an appropriate place to use the sand finish. Also, they've noted on these that vents and other things tend to sort of end up on building faces that don't look very good. We're going to try to keep them away from the outside of the building, and that's something that we'll have to work on them as the project gets developed through the construction documents. A couple of comments about the changes that's happened since last time in the building layout and in the units. So, you notice this is a typical floor plans in the upper floors. And one of the comments that was made was that there's not enough of the corridors daylighting to the building. So, there's been a change at the lower right corner of the drawings on the northwest corner of the building. And you see now there is a corridor that extends out to let daylight on the 64th Street side. So, that's been a change since the last time. And you also notice that that unit has been changed too. We'll get to that in a minute. It was a two-bedroom unit, I believe. Now, it's a one-bedroom unit with a small kind of den of bonus space. Also, what's changed in the floor plan is on the northwest corner, on the Shellmount and 64th Street side, that unit has been reconfigured so that the corner is a balcony and the living areas face the corner. It was previously the balcony was pulled in, and the living areas were not facing the corner. This is just the one-bedroom unit that became available when the corridor was extended. And the reason I wanted to bring this up is that even though it's a one-bedroom unit and not a two-bedroom unit, it's a spacious, well-designed, one-bedroom unit, so it's a good unit. The little extra room is big enough for different types of small study or, you know, baby room or things like that. So, rather than a cramped two-bedroom, you have actually a well-functioning one-bedroom unit that's laid out. And I think that's a plus for the project, and it's consistent with the Amityville Design Guidelines too for unit diversity. There's several units. I'm going to try to go through them quickly. There's a couple of units where we're recommending some additional work. B1 is one of those units. And there's some language in the staff report that talks about that. But what I did was did a quick overlay to show you what that meant, to give you an idea of the magnitude of the changes. And so, I'm going to try to sort of put this on the machine with Maru's help. Okay. So, just put it there. So -- oh. I'm going to need a piece of paper.
Okay.
All right. That's good. That's good. All right. We'll make this work. So, just to go back for a second. Can I go back to the other one?
Do it over it?
Yeah. No, do this. Okay. So, in this unit, you notice that the entry is near the dining area and that the -- that's the -- one of the main features of this unit that we wanted to focus on is how can we get as many of the family-friendly features in the unit? So, with some minor reorganizations of the area adjacent to the entry, we achieved several things. And let's go here. Maybe we didn't. Okay. Fine. So, in this case -- let me see. So, in this case, a more defined entry is possible. The entry area now would be to the side of the dining room and kitchen and would allow for sort of the entry not to be directly into the living area. Also, with this, working around some of the minor elements of the plan configuration, I noticed that there was a chance to get like a desk or something in the kitchen and that would sort of help provide one of those additional flexible type of spaces that would help the unit be more family-friendly, because this unit doesn't have an island or anything like that. So, there's these little kind of changes to the plans that I think will stretch these units and make them a little more developed and family-friendly in different ways. And this is what I'm thinking that in a few of these units would be helpful to maximize their family-friendly development. Okay. Let's go back here. Okay. I'm not going to talk about all the units, but I'll talk about B4 really quickly. Don't go away.
No.
Yeah. I -- I'm going to need you to stay there for a second. So, on this unit, the main issue was the dining room table was kind of floating and encroaching on the living room. And I think this inside corner units and these diagonal units are difficult to plan for, but they also offer some opportunities. So, this is sort of a suggestion about how the dining table can be more anchored. And I think one of the goals, the family-friendly, was to make sure that we had a functional dining area. Now, this one, we moved the island, but this might be a case where a movable island would be possible. Also, this is a case where some slight adjustments to the entryway might make them more defined, plus a larger closet rather than the side-by-side washer and dryer. Make the closet larger so that it is big enough to put a stroller in. So, that's another kind of idea that we would want to explore with the architect in refining the units. It does not change the outside unit or the number of rooms, with just a few of the walls. Okay. That'd be hard to put stuff. So, there are several units that work really well, and these are a couple of examples here. These are also corner units. The layout with the opening in the walls provides for, actually, I think, seven places where there's actual corner units, outside corner units, which is really favorable over a building with no opening, which would only have like four. So, that's a big plus. And the -- these two units are two-bedroom units, but everything is fitting pretty well. The kitchen works. The dining and living areas are large enough. The unit B5.2 has an actual full laundry room near the entry, so people could kind of come in there and if they have a stroller or something like that, they can kind of put it off in the laundry room. So, that's a nice positive on that unit. And the layout is efficient, and there's windows at the corner. So, these are really strong units for family-friendly approaches. The three-bedroom units, C1 is the one unit that is the change unit on the northwest, northeast corner of the building. And so, this is an improving unit. There's a few other things that I think would be helpful to this unit. The other three-bedroom units have some very minor things that I didn't actually do a drawing, but I did one more drawing for this unit. So, you notice on this unit, the kitchen looks towards the living room, and there's a movable island there that backs up to the small sofa. And it just seemed like that didn't really work. So, I wanted to look at that, and I want to look at the entry a little more and so that these spaces can be a little more refined. So, the type of thing that we'd want to talk to the architect and the developer about would be, as I'm going to show you in a second. So, in this case, there's just a few minor changes, adding the island to the end of the kitchen so that it didn't interfere with the living room furniture, getting a more defined entry space with a bigger closet, moving the door into the master bedroom. And all these things create a few more opportunities, in this case, including the island at the end of the kitchen to kind of screen from the kitchen to the dining room and also ask had the place for bar seating, because this one doesn't have a extra study nook or anything like that. And then, in the entry, there's an indication of they can do a barn door or something like that, and that unit can close off if the family wish to close off the entry. So, these all increase the number of family-friendly features of the unit. And so, that's the basic goal. So, just to move through the last ones, there's a few more units here. There's minimal comments on the rest of the units. The townhomes have been modified from the earlier designs, and they've been made a little more efficient and with a little more identifiable place for the furniture. And that's about it. The one last issue on the townhomes is always concerned about privacy. And you notice here this image where they have some landscape and some planners, and we would like to explore that a little bit more. Some of the planning is not that tall. We also want to look at the window shades and make sure that the window shades into the units allow for operation and different up-down kind of movement so that people don't have to close the whole window shade to get some privacy. That's -- I think that's the end of my section of the presentation, unless there's any questions.
So, as part of the conditions of approval, there are a couple of conditions of approval which requires the applicant to work on some of the unit design that Arnold sort of explained to you. So, now, we'll look at some photo simulations. This is location from the Powell Street Bridge. This is the before. This is after. This is from the pedestrian bridge. And this is after. And you can see that the space here will be occupied by parcel B.
I would note that these photo simulations also include the parcel C building, because we want you to see it in context of what you've already approved.
Okay. This is along Shellmount Street, looking north. Don't see -- just see a little bit of it. This is looking south on Shellmount, and this is where the building will be sitting there. So, a traffic study was done for overall of the Market Place, where it looked at the current generation and traffic volumes of the proposed project, the entire project, that is parcels A, B, and C, and to make sure that the baseline conditions have not substantially changed. And then, in addition, the traffic study also looked at the parcel D site circulation, loading, and parking for parcel D, as well as for the overall. There were no major issues that were identified. There were certain few recommendations regarding the site circulation, nothing that architects cannot work through, and these have become conditions of approval. So, coming to in terms of how whether the project conforms with the general plan and whether it is consistent with approved PUD or not. The general plan designation is mixed use with residential, where residential and retail uses and associated parking are permitted. The PUD findings that the Commission has to make is that the FDP substantially conforms to the PDP and that the changes and conditions of approval specified in the City Council's approval of the PDP have been met. We believe that the FDP does substantially conform to the approved PDP. The PDP identified at this site a 50-foot-tall building with 130 units, 68 townhouses, and a little over 100,000 square feet of commercial space. The project is smaller, with 12 townhomes, 211 units, and it reaches a maximum height of 80 feet. Overall, this is the difference between what was approved by the City Council in 2008 and what is proposed. The difference is, as you can see, we've talked about this several times before, the residential is a little bit smaller. There is no office being proposed at this point, and the amount of retail is also smaller. The intent of the original approval was to replace the surface parking lots and create a mixed-use development over a 25-year period. The revised proposal for this Market Place development is to create a slightly smaller mixed-use development that replaces the existing parking lots with marginally less units, less retail space, and no office space, and within a much shorter timeframe. So, we believe that the FDP is consistent with the conditions of approval of the PDP as approved by the City Council. The project also needs to conform with the Shellmount Design Guidelines, and the site is also within the pedestrian priority zone. And there are criterias under both for sidewalk widths. The Shellmount Design Guidelines require a minimum overall sidewalk width of 12 feet, with a typical width of 16 feet. And when there is a parking lane, proposed clear pedestrian walkway width of eight feet is required with an overall sidewalk width of 14 feet. The pedestrian priority zone criteria are a little less stringent. It calls for an eight-foot clear pedestrian pathway and a four-foot landscaped or a street furniture zone with a total sidewalk width of 12 feet. So, I'll go through -- the site has three streetscapes. So, this is the first one is the Shellmount. The total sidewalk width that is proposed is 16.5 feet with a clear walkway of eight and a half feet. So, therefore, it complies with both the guidelines as well as the pedestrian priority zone criteria. The 63rd Street streetscape provides a sidewalk width of 14 feet with a clear walkway of eight and a half. This is the Market Drive streetscape. It has a sidewalk width of 14 again and a clear walkway of eight and a half. And finally, the 64th Street, the sidewalk is 16 and a half with a clear walkway of 8.5. So, all the three street sites do comply with our guidelines. In terms of CEQA review, an EIR was approved by the City Council in 2008 as a part of this project. An environmental checklist, which is attached to the staff report, confirms that there have been no substantial changes in the proposed project or to the circumstances under which the project will be undertaken, and that no new information of substantially important exists which would require preparation of a subsequent EIR. So, that concludes my presentation. We are requesting that the Commission approve the project subject to conditions of approval as outlined in the staff report, as well as the modifications presented in the memo in front of you. The memo is essentially, there are no substantive differences. It's more in terms of clarity and clarifications in the language. One is to do with the right-of-way dedication. The other tries to clarify the trash plans. We want to make sure that the trash bins are not out on the sidewalk for more. Once the -- once the trash is picked up, the bins are immediately returned to the building. So, the condition kind of clarifies that. And there is some clarification regarding that the assignment of the parking spaces for the ones which are provided in the puzzle lifts, they can be assigned to a unit, but the remainder need not be assigned to a unit. So, these are just clarifications to the staff report. So, with that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer.
I had a question about these recommendations the architect is making. How does that conform to approval of this project?
They are included in your conditions of approval already.
Oh.
He was kind of giving you an example of what that would mean. What would it take for the current proposal to be modified? What would it take for the current proposal to be modified? So that gives you, kind of gives you an idea of the extent of work that remains to be done and which can be covered by conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
So those are kind of similar conditions to what we approved on parcel C?
That is correct.
Okay.
So Maru, you made reference to the possibility that some of the C3 stormwater requirements would change the street sections. Would they change the pedestrian clear width of the street sections, or would they just be longer?
They cannot. They need, I mean, the pedestrian pathway, the sidewalk, the Shellmount Design Guidelines need to be complied. So when the stormwater measures are taken, we will make sure that they fit within what the different zones are, which means a clear pathway, and then where you have the landscaped zone as well as the street furniture zone. So to answer your question, there would be, ultimately, the streetscape on all three sites would comply with the Shellmount Design Guidelines. Whether the landscape planter on the site is stormwater or not, that might change. But other than that, the different widths will remain the same.
So the language in the proposed conditions of approval, it says, "will comply with the guidelines to the extent possible."
We can certainly include it if that makes the commission more comfortable.
No, I'd like to take it out.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to take it out so that we know that we get compliance with the guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to clarify one thing, the Shellmount Design Guidelines apply to the Shellmount Street frontage, and the pedestrian priority zone guidelines apply to the other three frontages.
Although they all at this point comply with the Shellmount as well.
I had one other question. We received the EIR, the environmental checklist, and it referenced a lot of the mitigation members' measures, excuse me, from the original PDB. And I am just wondering in terms of process how those mitigation measures are incorporated, whether they should, some of them be incorporated by reference? Was there actually a wind study done on this one that we know about?
Yes, there was a wind study done. And the way it is in terms of process, the first page of your conditions of approval, there's a reference to the PDB, the original BUD conditions. So that's how they will get incorporated.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, and you may have already mentioned this during the presentation, the part that I missed, so I apologize for my lateness. So the windows that are facing the train tracks on Shellmount, as well as the windows that are facing the Market Building, the other parcel, do we have the upgraded STC-rated windows for parcel D like we had talked about for the previous?
Yes, we do. Would you like me to?
No, I take your word for it. I just want to make sure we cover, we cover some of those conditions that we had last time. And then I see they picked up the parking stalls for families, and the transportation information display shows the bike-share stations.
Some of the comments you made for the last time.
Yeah, from last time. Does it also include the construction worker shuttle program in terms of the transportation demand planned during construction? And that's just to avoid choking up parking and traffic down there. If they find that they're having an issue with getting their workers to these, to the site, that they look into an off-site shuttle program?
I believe I have included that. I'll double-check, and if not, then I will include it.
That's all I had.
Off-site shuttle, we didn't acquire that.
So if there are no further questions, the applicant does have a presentation.
You're in construction. There you go.
It's not letting me go.
Maru, I did have one more question. On the staff report, there is a table of responses to comments, and I don't know whether this is you or the applicant that would answer, but the last set of responses to comments, I didn't see where the comments were. I saw some responses that didn't make a lot of sense without the comments attached. The last, it's like five or six comments.
Maybe you can ask that to the applicant?
Okay.
Yeah.
Nathan Hong with Avalon Bay. Just wanted to make a, just a quick comment on a lot of the work that's been done over the past two months. And, you know, our architect and team has worked really hard, and, you know, I know Commissioner Tand you've looked at some of the checklists. We've all worked hard to try to really make sure we've addressed them over the past two months, and from lightening the corridor and refining the elevations and, you know, addressing some of those details. And we've worked really well with the city's architect consultant and with Maru. Most importantly, on the family-friendly units, and I guess I just wanted to address that, as Arnold has shown, a few more kind of comments in terms of how that's worked out. We feel it's been really, really working out well. It's, as you kind of all can see, it's an iterative process with the design of the units, and we've designed many units, and our architect does as well, but a lot, it's been very productive and collaborative to incorporate a lot of the comments that Arnold has provided us. And I think, we feel that the end product is really something that's much better in a unit design, that, you know, obviously meets the family-friendly guidelines. So we will continue to work with the city and with Arnold to incorporate these other comments that he has. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Tom to give you the little more detail.
Good evening. My name's Tom Cox with TCA Architects. I think we all know the site. Wow.
Careful.
The fastest four finger. Actually, this isn't mine, I don't think. Yours is? Oh, went right past it.
Yeah, just real light.
Real light.
This is what Kay wants to get rid of.
Page 13.
I feel very technically challenged at the moment.
Get rid of this.
Okay.
Just invisible.
So we all know where the site is. I thought I would just bring up a couple of the very key components of what we've had as a discussion ongoing for the last several months, but it actually dates back to the original study sessions. First of all, I'd like to really thank the city and the community, who's had a lot of input for us, the planning department, which has been a very collaborative affair, and also with the city architect. It's been a rigorous and an arduous process, and we've embraced it, I think, and actually had a pretty good time with it. As a result, I think the project is spectacular, and I hope the city is going to be as proud of it as we are. The study session key points that we have brought tonight are the movement of the amenity in the spaces to Shellmount Street to create an active street scene on Shellmount, and to locate the townhouses along 63rd, also along Market Drive. And those were the study points from previous, and then again, provide more 2- and 3-bedroom units, and that those units would be family-friendly. So these key points have been addressed. We have now provided in excess, we're actually at about 43%, 2- and 3-bedrooms, and those 2- and 3-bedrooms have been gone over numerous times with flying buff paper and flying ink and scales, and a very intensive study session to make these units really comply with the intention and the diversity that the city's looking for with family-friendly units. We were also tasked to improve the corridor design by adding light. We have, as was mentioned earlier, at the ground level, we have three points of access to the courtyard, and we have brought light and air into the corridors in additional spaces. We've reviewed the pool location and with the sun study, and we worked with the city architect in making sure that we had key seating areas in the pool area that had sunlight most of the time, and that the children's play area was always had sun and air and was always had the direct sunlight. We had some minor changes that were made on the corners as we modified our units. Some of our windows changed, some of our deck locations changed, and we've made those modifications also. The new mix, 53% 2- and 3-bedrooms, and we've got, I think your 2-bedroom, or your 3-bedrooms were like 9.9%. So that other tenth of a percent, I don't remember where that went. But we're at 53% 2- and 3-, 10% 3-bedrooms, and 43% 2-bedrooms. And this is the location map designating where those units would be located. The city architect has gone through the floor plans that we presented in great detail, and I think he did an excellent job illuminating some of the big ideas, and we went through every single item on the family-friendly checklist, and we incorporated as many of those components in the floor plans and within the community as we possibly could. We did a balancing where we had some units that needed a lot of work and some units that really worked pretty well, and we brought as much of that into conformance as possible. And we have a little bit of work left to do. This is a diagram that shows one of the things that was a concern. These corridors are pretty long, and so a variety of configurations in the corridors, some widening up. We've recessed a number of our entries so that as you're going down the corridor, you just don't have door after door after door. Those doors quite often are offset, so they're not looking one across the hallway to another. We've increased the light and air. This diagram doesn't show it, but we also have those points of access along with the patios to the ground-level podium. This is the pool area. I think you can see on the diagram, that's actually the east to the top, is the children's play area adjacent to the pool and adjacent to the community clubroom, which has that sign added pool seating. And you can see the sun diagrams that city architect was referring to in terms of having sun at the equinox, mostly in that courtyard area. The key points that changed in terms of the elevations, I think everything stayed pretty much the same, with the exception of changing out some of the materials, the smoother stucco, a little bit of a sheen. I know that that came up on some of our cementitious panels. We've shown you all of the material boards that we brought, so those changes have been made. But this actually shows the north elevation on Shellmount at 64th Street, and also what it used to be on the left and what it currently is now, where we had lost that deck on the corner at one point, and it was a concern for the city about the erosion or that deck being lost. So we brought that deck back. We redesigned that entire corner unit, and that's the result of that. And then the revision to the east elevation, the Shellmount and 64th, also shows as you're going down Shellmount what it used to be on the left, and then the new deck locations that are now located on the right. That also brought a lot more light and openness into that particular unit. This is the elevation as it is. All the windows, doors, openings have been changed to be reflective of exactly how the building is designed, and our intention is to have this carried out successfully. That is my presentation. I think the rest of the presentation was done extremely well, and I'm available for questions if you have any.
Sir, wasn't there some discussion about removing the vertical Avalon sign?
No signs are being approved as part of this approval. If they propose signs, then it will come back to the commission for approval.
Oh, okay.
So any signs that you see on the renderings are illustrative.
Does that include the structure that supports the sign? Or the fin?
The blade itself?
The blade, the outrigger.
I'm not sure.
I mean, I don't know for certain, but I would think that whole structure would be defined as a sign probably.
I would think if you didn't have that big of a sign, you wouldn't need the big structure, but I think the, well, leave that to the planning.
What do we want? Yeah, good question. I don't know. I don't see it shown on the floor plan. See it shown on the elevations? Only shown there from the rendering?
It's shown on the elevation enlargement on the...
It's not shown in the elevation.
Sign, I mean, the sign itself is shown on the elevations.
Well, the, the signs on the elevation, the enlargement, the structure.
Yeah.
It's also on A 2.4.
So I take it you're not thrilled with that sign?
No, I mean, we've had so much controversy about signs that we have approved that I think we need, we need to have a lot of detail about it, the illumination.
All right. I suggest, then, if it isn't clear, you should put it, we should put it in the conditions of approval that this approval does not include any signs, including their support structures.
They could construct the building so that thing could be added at some later time, I presume.
Sure.
If it were approved.
The standard condition on page two, it says, "Any additional uses or design modifications including signs will require a separate application and approval." It doesn't explicitly say that no signs are included in this, but we could clarify that.
I would like to clarify that.
You mentioned, I mean, I know we talked about this, you know, one of the things that makes this rendering pop is the sheen of the cementitious panels, and it always appears pretty glossy. And we saw the material board, and I don't see either of those panels really having that sheen that I think, at least I was looking for. I'm wondering what the, like, was there a decision that went into the choice of the panels that are on the material board?
The panels are painted, I'm sure, and our intention, and I think we called it out, is a glossier sheen for the panel. It's going to have to go through a material selection, but the intention and the goal for us is, and I think we wrote it into the, our changes and modifications, is to provide a panel with a sheen that is not flat and is not, doesn't have a material, you know, texture to it, so that it has that flat panel look also.
When you say they're painted, I mean, they do make pre-finished ones. Those are the ones that really have the gloss to them. Are you opposed to the pre-finished panels?
I'm not opposed to them at all.
Okay.
May I suggest that unless there are further clarifying questions for the applicant, that you hold the public hearing and then deliberate on the design?
Yeah, okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant?
I was wondering what the comment was, number two, on the environmental programs plan check comments. It says, "Note has been added to the plan stating that." I was wondering.
Blank. It's that it's blank.
There's no, there's the responses to comments, but I don't, the comments aren't there.
Which is, which comment number is that?
Number two, on the last page. It's a mystery.
Okay. Yeah, maybe, maybe the applicant can review that and get back to us after the public hearing.
Yeah.
So with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward. All right, well, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. All right, well, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we will bring this back for deliberation. Who wants to start?
Well, I think great improvements have been made in this project, and particularly the number of family-friendly.
Can you use the microphone, please, Commissioner Perdoso?
Particularly the number of family-friendly units exceeds anything else we've done in Emeryville, and I would recommend we approve it with the modifications we've made.
Well, I would like to see the language changed regarding the sidewalk width, so that we know that we're going to get the sidewalk clear passage, because right now, the way it's stated, it just says, "To the extent feasible," and that the C3 would be.
I have some notes here on changes to the conditions that I've heard in your discussion so far. Maybe I should summarize that?
That would help.
At the, let's see, at the beginning, we would say, "No signs or sign support structures are included in this approval." That's the first condition, the general compliance with approvals condition. Under the traffic and parking management plan during construction, on page eight, we would add a reference to the option of shuttles for construction workers. And on the condition on page 13 about redesigning the sidewalks for C3 stormwater compliance, we would delete the phrase "and to the extent feasible" from the end of that sentence.
The one other thing that I'd like to see is that there are recommendations from the traffic report that are referenced in terms of the figures, and one of the figures deals with the transportation demand management program, but there were a lot more extensive recommendations on the traffic demand management program within the traffic report, and I'd like to see that language added. It was recommendation number six on page nine of the June traffic report.
Could we just incorporate that by reference into the conditions rather than repeating all the language?
That would be fine.
I agree with what I've heard so far, that, and especially the fact that the project has really made some great strides in creating family-friendly housing, and I think that the project is, is ready for approval.
Yeah, I think, I think with the two, well, we mentioned some potential additional conditions of approval regarding the sign, and I'd love to see something regarding the cementitious panels, that they're pre-finished, glossy, at least the ones that are appearing that way in the rendering, the sort of burnt orange color. The pool, I don't, I mean, I'm still, I still wish it was further east so that it would get more sun, or that the opening was on the west side, or something along those lines, because I think the most of the time, or the most likely time, people are going to want to use the pool in this in the afternoon, but I understand all the constraints. I, and it, I don't know that we're going to solve it now, but one thing in looking at these, these unit plans, that I start to realize that we never really talked about in the family-friendly design discussion, is the, and it comes up, because I even had a client of my own tell me this recently, that they wanted to make sure their bedroom was between their kids' bedrooms and the front door. And it's like, oh, yeah, I mean, that makes a lot of sense that, you know, if these are really units that are designed for families, are the kids' bedroom doors really supposed to be right near the front entry, while the parents' bedroom door is further, deeper into the unit? And so it might be something to try to take into consideration while looking at the unit designs as well. I think the comment that I had previously made about the corridors opening to the exterior was about light, but it was also about connection to the courtyard. And so I see that there are now a couple connections of the corridors to the exterior, but they're connecting to the streets, and I think it's more important that they connect to the court, to the courtyard, so that especially a lot, I mean, a lot of these units, people have to go out of their, out of their unit, go down the corridor, go to the elevator, go down to the courtyard, and the ability to look from the corridor at some point down to the courtyard, I think, would entice more people to the courtyard, would just, you know, put more eyes on it. So I don't know if that's, you know, if the units, the space that was gained, that was lost in cutting the corridors to the exterior could be gained back and then given to the corridors and a place where they, they open to the courtyard, but that would be my ideal, you know, my, my wish. And I'd love to see the units that are around the pool right now, because of the placement of the pool, the units that are immediately adjacent, like, a lot of the other units that are on the podium level open directly to the courtyard, which is great, but the ones that are near the pool are prevented from doing so because of the planter and the proximity of the pool, and I'm sure the desire to maintain the safety and protect the pool and prevent kids from running right out of their units into the pool. But shifting the pool a little bit or something, or working out the planters and the walkway in some way that those additional units would also have connection directly to the courtyard, I think, would help, help the, sort of, to activate the courtyard more as well. So those are my comments. I don't know if, maybe, I guess maybe this is a question for the, for the design team about the corridors and whether you guys see a way to connect them to the courtyard instead of the exterior, or if others up here even feel like that is of value.
Chair Moss, could I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Of Commissioner Gunkel. Looking at sheet A 1.3, and I believe somewhere in here, there's also a drawing of just the courtyard, but I can't find it at the moment, but it appears to me that all of the units facing the courtyard, including those adjacent to the pool, on the south and, I mean, on the north and west sides of the, and the south, actually, sides of the courtyard, do have doors going out onto the courtyard.
I think if you, if you look at the landscape plan, they show that they're fenced off.
Oh. Well, yes, they, they would have to have fences to separate them.
Well, I don't think they have a gate.
Oh, you're saying they can't get from their patios out to the rest of the courtyard?
Yeah, the other ones can.
I see.
But it would be nice if those could as well.
I see.
Yeah, I agree. That's a frustrating thing when you can't do that.
Yeah.
Go back out.
Yeah, yeah, you, if you're out on your porch and you're looking out and you see your friends out there, you gotta go into your house and run all the way around through all the courtyards or corridors and get out.
So we'd make a recommendation that the courtyards have gates on them?
Got some gates.
The private courtyards have gates on them?
Yeah, I mean, I think they'd have to tweak the, the planters and the, because, so a lot of them do already have direct access, but the ones around the pool don't, and it's because the pool's right there. And I don't think, I think they're sort of using those as, using the gates of those patios as part of the security around the pools.
They'd probably have to have locked gates, too, because of the security aspect of the children, and that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe with the exceptions of the ones around the pool area or something?
Well, the other ones already are open to the courtyard, so I don't, I like that. I'm just saying the ones around the pool. If somehow there was a way to tweak the deck of the pool and the planters around the pool so that those units weren't, were actually connected directly to the courtyard as well.
What sheet is the landscaping?
Yeah.
It's kind of better, it's kind of better.
What sheet L3, oh, yeah.
That's the landscaping plan.
Oh, L3?
Yeah.
Yeah, L3. Right, right, I know.
Yeah, it's the one, two, three, four, five, six, six patios right around the pool.
So they could have locked gates or something on them?
Yeah, well, I don't, even if they had locked gates, I don't, where they would lock from the pool side so people can't, because I think what they, what they're trying to do is prevent people who are in these units from going into the pool area on, off hours.
Well, there's also. It's also building codes.
Right, yeah, yeah.
On security, basically.
So I'm just wondering, you know, what, actually, I'm wondering, is there a way to sort of have a perimeter path that, and then move the fence that's around the pool to the deck, maybe scoot the deck in just a couple of feet. The path could even be just some stones or something like that.
Excuse me, Commissioner, we actually did look at putting a path between them, and the net result was a direct loss of landscape and direct loss of area for the pool, which was more of a community experience. The code says that you don't want access without controlled gates and so forth, and for the most part, pools only want to have two access points, not multiple, because it does increase the amount of security and safety and stuff. What we did do in those situations, and yes, you cannot walk, in those six units, you cannot walk out directly to the pool, you have to go to the corridor to get out, but what we did do to increase the patio's, let's call it desirability, is we enlarged them a bit. We also have a lower wall with a see-through fence so that they get more light, and that was one of the things that we felt was sort of a balance between the few courtyards that didn't have direct access versus the ones that did. So, so we did weigh those, all of those thoughts. The net result was trying to give them some, some more space so that they benefited from being on the pool and feeling like they were part, and for the most part, people who want to be on the pool like that kind of accessibility. So, so again, it was a balance. If we put an additional path, which we did try, it just reduces the ability to have a, a community space that feels comfortable for everybody, so those were sort of the things we looked at.
So are these planters, like, a few feet tall, or?
Yes, they're, majority of the planters, except, we do have a lot of C3 planters up there. I mean, the only place that we can deal with stormwater for the building is in the patio, so it was also balancing that. What we were able to do is not use C3 right there, so that's why we lowered them to two feet. And then there's a three-foot fence partition that is a very interesting metallic design that, with perforations, designed to code as well, just to make it more interesting and feel more fun and graphic. So that was sort of the ideas there.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to see it worked out, but I don't know. And if those aren't C3 planters, then it seems like there'd be a way to do it.
So that's detail B on the sheet.
I just imagine, you know, there's kids in those units staring out at the pools, their friends are out there, and having conversations through this perforated metal fence, and having to run out through the court, through the corridors to get to the pool.
Yes.
And I'm not saying, I'm saying that they should be directly connected to the pool, I'm saying that they should be directly connected to the courtyard, and the fence for the pool should be moved over to the actual pool deck.
Well, it's only six units that are affected.
Yeah, I guess it's just like, the more the merrier, because there aren't a lot of units that are directly opening to the courtyard, so the more that do, I think it'll benefit the courtyard a lot.
I, I wouldn't be as concerned about it if those units had closer access to the courtyard from the hallway, but as it is, they're some of the furthest units from the, from the courtyard access, too.
And it does give the option of folks choosing units that they, you know, they want to have more privacy, they don't necessarily want to, you know, be close to the courtyard or, you know, it gives them a sense of separation, and there are only six of those units.
Sounds like we're conflicted on that one.
Do you have anything else?
Well, I guess I would move to approve with the conditions of approval that we've discussed, including the sign not being, sign or structure being, not being part of the approval, the panels, the cementitious panels being pre-finished, glossy, and I don't know if the design team's open to looking at the court, the corridors and seeing if, instead of opening them to the exterior, they're opening them at a couple spots to the courtyard instead.
We did look at that. The corridor opening that we gave to the exterior to bring light and air into the corridor cost us five two-bedroom units. And if we do that on the inside.
I'm not saying do both, I'm saying get rid of what you've got and do it on the courtyard side instead.
So take the light and air out of the exterior.
And connect to the courtyard instead.
Well, don't you get more light from the outside than you do from the courtyard? And you certainly get more air circulation from the outside.
I, I don't know. I don't, I doubt they're gonna have open windows there, and.
That's true.
I'm guessing that the light, I mean, it depends. I mean, right now, it's facing, the one's facing north, which, right up against another building, you know, a building right across the street, I don't.
Having walked a number of these, the light at the end of those hallways illuminates the entire hallway, north, south, east or west.
Yeah.
It's natural light.
And I think doing it on the courtyard side instead would do the same.
That doesn't go into the.
It doesn't go into the corridor, though. If you do it on the outside, it goes to the corridor and stops versus being at the end of a corridor from the outside. Not, not to be argumentative, but.
Because the punch, are you saying the punch through to the corridor is perpendicular to the hallway, and therefore the light stops?
So it's gotta be at the end of the hallway in order to illuminate the hallway, or it just dies before it even gets to the hallway, so.
You're not.
Again, not being argumentative, but it's studied it over and over and over, and the best light.
No, I, I see what you're saying. I guess to me, it's less important than the connection to the courtyard.
I think it's more important to see light at the end of the corridor.
Light at the end of the tunnel, yeah.
See out, rather than just have a little floodlight coming in the center of the courtyard, of the corridor.
I would love to see more connection to the courtyard, but I do agree with you because I think that if you have a right-angle connection, you're only going to see it when you're passing by, but if you have light at the end of the corridor, it's gonna.
No, no.
Provide a benefit for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, I think my, my ideal scenario would have been somewhere near stairs and elevators that there's actual, a puncture into, you know, a visual connection to the courtyard, because those are going to be places where people are going to be waiting as well, but I'm, it sounds like I'm, I've voted on this, so it's okay.
I appreciate the interchange, though.
Before we second the motion, can I, can I give my comments as well?
Oh, yeah, oh, sorry.
So, yeah, I also think this project has come really far. I really appreciate that the, the work that the applicant has done on it and the work, their work alongside of the city's design consultant. The, I think the only, I mean, other than the things we've already sort of discussed, the only kind of concern I have is a little bit over the elevation on the Shellmount I really appreciate all of the cementitious panel on that elevation, but at the same time, it's kind of, I think it becomes a little bit blocky, like, even when I see it in the rendering, so I would almost like to see some of that cementitious panel removed to break, you know, to break that up into, and then moved maybe onto one of the other elevations where, you know, we could use a break in the plaster more, like, like 63rd Street or, what is it? That's 63rd Street. Yeah, that's 63rd or, or the 64th Street elevation, so I don't, I don't know what others think about that.
I, I don't, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, and I do, you know, some of the other sides are not as, as sort of flashy as this side, but at the same time, I feel like there is, you know, as much as we go around trying to break buildings up, I think Emeryville also has a lot of. Emeryville also has a lot of larger mass buildings, and I think they even refer to that in one of their images, and they, I, I don't think it's, you know, necessarily a negative thing to have that sort of volume on shell mound. Just, I've seen some recent buildings, some buildings under construction or nearing completion, where there was clearly a lot of effort put into breaking up volumes to the point where, you know, there's just a bunch of little vertical pieces all along, and so seeing this one's kind of mass is kind of nice in a way.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I guess, I guess if it was either kind of more defined or broken up a little better, I, I could, you know, I could kind of go either way, but I don't know. So that was, that was sort of the idea I came up with, but if, I don't know, if, if others don't agree, then I will let it go.
I would move approval with the modifications that we've all agreed.
I believe there's already a motion on the floor.
There is.
I think Commissioner Gunkel, is that right?
Yes, approval with the sign and the glossy panel.
And the other sidewalk width.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Transportation.
You could second.
Reference.
All right, I'll second that motion.
Okay. I will, yes.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes.
We have one question.
You speak into the microphone, please.
This is really, you know, I want to be thoughtful and careful about it, because you're getting ready to approve, and I shouldn't interrupt it, I know, but on one of the conditions of approval with the traffic management, and I know it's going to be incorporated in it, but I wanted to be thoughtful of it, and you mentioned recommendation six, one of them has to do with implementing time restrictions on guest parking, and so I just wanted to see if that could be clarified, so that, you know, as guests come in to visit, you know, family and friends, they kind of come in at all hours of the day, and so just for little flexibility on that, that language was just something I wanted to clarify and add to that condition.
I believe that that was just a recommended one, that there were some that were phrased as, "These should be implemented," and others that were possible other options. Is that, is that right, Catherine?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So, could you clarify?
Jeff, did you want to?
No.
Okay.
So, if I may, I'd like to summarize the changes to the conditions that we've heard. On page two, the first condition would have a clarification that no signs or sign support structures are included in this approval. On page eight, the traffic and parking management plan during construction would include an option for shuttles. On page 13, the C3 requirements about redesigning the sidewalks would delete the phrase "and to the extent feasible." I'm not sure what page these, these last two are on, but one would be to incorporate by reference recommendation number six from the traffic study into the traffic man, traffic demand, transportation demand management program, and then there would be a condition that the cementitious panels be pre-finished glossy panels. Those are the conditions I've heard.
Did you hear the, the sign?
Signs.
I said that. Did I say that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you said that.
Okay.
Is that, is that what you're voting on?
Yep, sounds good.
All right. You ready to vote?
Yep.
Commissioner Cardozo?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Tan?
Aye.
Chair Moss?
Aye.
Five ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days. Congratulations.